Good evening. Start us off with a wake-up call. Thank you for joining us for the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency meeting for January 13th. It is 5:30. And the Urban Renewal Agency deserves, reserves, excuse me, the right to add or delete items as needed to our agenda, change the order of the agenda, and discuss any other business deemed necessary at the time of the meeting. All information for this meeting is available on our city's website under Agenda, packets and video, and you may watch us on TV on Channel 4 if you'd like. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door in the back of the chambers. You will be called during the public comments section. Comment or testimony on agenda items listed under Public Hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. And I've dispensed with our formalities. May we have a roll call, please?
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Riley Hogland.
Here.
Diane Coos.
Here.
Rick Mark.
Here.
Mitch Parsons.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
And Judy Casper.
Here.
And because we have a short timeline, just a half hour for our meeting today, I would like to change, make a little change to the agenda. I would like to flip three with four and have four earlier and then move back to a presentation, which would be number three on the agenda. Is that okay with everyone? No problems? Just to make sure we get our business taken care of first. Thank you. Okay, do we have any citizens who wish to make a comment? Were there any sign-ups in the back? Oh, there are. Did you sign? Okay. Would you, Stephanie, would you mind bringing up the sign-in sheet?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, you may want to check and see if they're signed up for this meeting or the next.
Just, okay. Okay, this is urban renewal. Is it for urban renewal or for council? That's fine. We're the same people. How are you supposed to know? Okay. All right, we're moving right along. Thank you. We now are going to move to our presentations. The first item is the 2020 election of Agency Chair and Vice Chair. And so I am opening the nominations for Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate you to continue being Chair.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Oh, all right.
Madam Chair, I'd move to close the nominations.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Kathy, are you getting all these firsts and seconds? Okay, good. All right, we have a nomination for Chair, which is Deanna Hinton, myself with a second, and we've closed, we had a motion to close the nominations, so shall we vote now, please? All those in favor to close nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nominations are closed. Now, I accept a motion to approve the appointment of myself to the Chair position.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Kathy, do we need a roll call vote for this, or is just voice okay? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. You've nominated me again. Thank you. I appreciate it. Now, we're going to open the nominations for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to nominate Mitch Parsons as Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Move to close the nominations.
Thank you. We have a second to close the nominations.
Second.
Thank you. So we have motion to close the nominations, and now we will vote on that nomination, which is Mitch Parsons, member, Member Parsons for Vice Chair of Urban Renewal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wow, that was fast. Okay, great. We're set for another year. Okay, moving, moving right along. We have another presentation tonight, which is the fiscal year 2018-19 submission of audited statements. So can we have staff, please?
Good evening. So we have completed our audit of the 1819 fiscal year and have posted those financial statements online on our website. It was a, it was a very good audit. We actually have our audit firm coming to speak to City Council about the audit and it's, there are different numbers, but the process and the results of the audit are very similar. In the urban renewal, there were no, it was an unqualified opinion, and I think there was one issue noted that actually has been on there for a while. But other than that, there were no material misstatements or anything, so I thought we probably could defer discussion to the, to the city presentation if you'd like.
Okay, I, I just have a couple of comments. One is, thank you again for another great year of good work and keeping us out of trouble. Really appreciate that.
Well, it's the whole department, yep. My great staff.
Well, pass it on.
Okay, I will.
Okay, and the only other question I have is one comment on page five. It says, "During the audit, we noted a general lack of timely review." And I remember that from last year, too. And we were going to put some things in place so we wouldn't come back to this statement again.
Yes, and it didn't work too well. I, I, the same item is on the, the city, finding is on the city audit as well. So it relates to journal entries that are done. So it doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with payroll or accounts payable, so it's not really money transactions that are coming in and out. It's just, you know, an entry. So, for example, if an entry gets positive, posted as a debit when it should have been a credit, instead of getting found out this month, we find it a couple of months later. My attempts so far to correct this haven't been successful, and so I am pondering what I can do. I, right now, what I'm thinking is, I'd like to try to look at some technology to help me with this, such as an online approval, routing and approval process perhaps. So as a journal entry is made, it gets routed to me rather than batching up. The other issue is that because it takes us, because it's such a process to close out the year, typically, the year is almost half over with before we start closing out a month. So, for example, we're just, you know, now getting July and August closed out because we just finished the last fiscal year. And so by the time the audit's over, I'm already a half a year behind. And I'd like to figure out how to change our process so that we're actually still closing on a timely basis, even though we don't have final numbers from the year before. So those are my two thoughts on that.
Oh, good.
I do need to come back with a resolution on what I, how I plan to address this. I didn't do it tonight because I, I'd like to not have this happen again and give a solution that's going to work. So rather than just repeating my, myself from last year, I'm trying to come up with something that'll, that'll work better for me.
So again, not to leave it on that note, just thank you so very much for keeping up with everything.
Well, you know, and I would point out, you know, they've got three, three people here for a total of four weeks looking at everything, so I might be brazen enough to say if that's the worst thing they find, then.
Could be worse. I'll say it. If that's the worst thing they can find.
Debbie, before you leave, this, these audits get filed with the, is it Secretary of State?
Yes.
And so as a special district? Is that where, for urban renewal, would show, would it be a special district under their category?
It's, it's not a special district. It's an urban renewal district.
Oh, okay.
Because usually when I hear special district, anyway, I think about special taxing district, like a water taxing district or something. But yes, I did, I have submitted, I have submitted both the city and urban renewal statements to the state.
Great, thank you.
That's great. Are there any other questions about this agenda item for Debbie? Okay.
Okay.
So if you wouldn't mind just sticking right there.
You bet.
And if we could zip down to resolutions.
Okay.
You can take us through Resolution Urban UR 2020-01, Resolution Authorizing and Directing Budget Transfers for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, and the 2019-2020 Fiscal Year Budget.
Yes. So we have two items on the urban renewal resolution. One relates to the PERS employer incentive match, which the council voted to do, I think, two meetings ago. So I allocated that out based on the 1819 PERS cost, so the urban renewal portion came out to $3,801. So the first item is basically to move $3,801 from capital reserve into the PERS Retirement Expense Fund, just to cover that match. The second has to do with economic development, and should council, or the city agency, rather, decide that they wish to purchase some prop, this property for economic development, it would be my recommendation that we would do this from a, in the current budget, we have a transfer of $412,000 from the construction fund to the property rehab fund, and it was just going into economic development. It didn't really have a specific assigned project for that money. So it'd be my, my recommendation to use that for the purchase of the land. So that would be the second item, should, should the agency wish to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding this for Debbie?
Thank you.
Okay, and this being a resolution, I suppose we should vote on it.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution UR 2020-01.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor? No? Oh, this is a voice vote because it's money. I mean a roll call vote, sorry.
Anderson.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hogland.
Yes.
Coos.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll bounce back to item number three and ask Allison to come forward for the update of the 2019 Annual Report and Projects.
Evening, Chair Hinton. Agency members.
Okay, so on your agenda, we just have a short update, just to let you know where we're at. We like to do this every January and report out what we've accomplished for the calendar year, and then also mention what we're looking to do and also provide an update on capital projects and other activities that staff's working on. So, let's see, we're, we're okay on time. So just as a reminder and for our viewing audience, the Urban Renewal Agency's only urban renewal district or area was formed in 1988 with a maximum indebtedness, which is another phrase for the total amount of funds to be used in the district on capital projects of $43 million. The final bond transaction was done in fall of 2017, and those funds are expected to be paid back or pay off that bond in the year 2021, which is three years earlier than what we anticipated. Since 2014, the Urban Renewal Agency has been what we call revenue sharing, where we return 80% of the tax increment to the overlapping taxing districts and hold on to 20% instead of our 100% that we had been holding since 1988, back to the, to the overlapping taxing districts. And that will happen until the Year 2000 Development Plan area pays back the remaining bond proceeds, which again is in 2021. Let's see.
If I could interrupt you.
Sure.
That's three years early, right?
It is three years early.
Okay, don't forget to mention that.
We love to hear it. Thanks Debbie for that one. Okay, so funds from the final bond were allocated to complete projects identified in the 2008 Cutler Community Vision and Corridor Plan, also North End or Roads End projects, like the Northeast 50th Street Pump Station and the D-Lake Utility Undergrounding Project, with any residual funds planned for the agency's Economic Development Toolbox. And so we do have a few updates on our capital projects. And then, just as a reminder, the Economic Development Toolbox is, we have our facade improvement loan, we have business expansion loan, and we have energy efficiency loan. Those are all available, ready to go out the door. For people who are interested, I'm happy to answer more questions about that. But we also, as you all remember, you made some, many more tools available in concept, and staff is working on those tools that will be available late May for the Urban Renewal Agency tool. The city also has a toolbox that we are working on creating those tools, and so we're, we're working as quickly as we can to get those tools. Once they're ready, we'll roll out with more marketing so that we can make sure that people are aware of what the opportunities are. We do have on our website, or people are welcome to stop by the office, we have a 27 Years of Accomplishments Report, basically encapsulates all the urban renewal capital projects that we have done since 1988. I refer to it fairly often. And we have a few projects that are not in there because we're waiting to build the last sidewalk section. And once we get that project on the ground, then we'll be able to update that, and we will have our completed accounting of what projects were done for that entire urban renewal area. So what are the last remaining capital projects? The one I just mentioned, my new joke is, we've got one more sidewalk left to build. That is the Cutler City Selets Baywalk Sidewalk Gap Design. And so you all have approved that we do design for this project. We don't yet have construction funds identified, and the design will take anywhere from 12 to 18 months because of complexities, having it be in ODOT right-of-way and because it's on the Selets Bay, there may be, need to be some shoring up of that topography so that we can make sure that the public investment is protected in the long run. We also have the Cutler City Selets Boardwalk Design. The reason why I put this on there is just so that we're all remembering that we did enter into a partnership agreement with the Pelican Brewing Company, who is doing a new construction project just to the south of the urban renewal property near the Highway 101 turnout. And really, that, in that agreement, we agreed to construct in as much capacity as we may have, or we may find grant funding or other partners of, if there are opportunities, to basically build a boardwalk to connect along the frontage of our property, which is a very small, unbuildable lot, but we want to make sure we have pedestrian connectivity that goes along the bay and then comes up to meet the ODOT right-of-way Highway 101 turnout. And what would happen is that section of boardwalk, if we were to construct it within a year, Pelican Brewing would contribute $50,000 toward that effort, and it would link up with their property just to the south of the urban renewal property. So I'm happy to answer more questions about that, or I can come back with maps and such if that's helpful. So those are the two projects, in addition to our four Urban Renewal Agency-owned properties. And so we have a property in Ocean Lake at Northwest 15th Street. We have one in D-Lake at Northeast 1st Street, which is otherwise known as Hostettler Park. It is not the open space, I just want to clarify, we do not ever plan to build anything on the open space. It's just on the park property, which was purchased in, in, with the intention of developing. And the park is really more of an interim use, that we can make sure that it's being used for the public in a nice way until there is a market for redevelopment. We also have a property in Nell Scott at Southeast 32nd Street, and one in Taft at the end of Southwest 51st Street. I can tell you that all of these properties, we are in exclusive negotiating agreement with developers, and staff is working as hard and fast as they can to get to a development agreement on these properties, so, so that you can decide what exactly will go there and what the developer is wanting to do and with timing, and then whatever public assistance that developer is requesting in a partnership agreement in order to get those properties developed. So are there any questions on the current projects?
Nope. Doesn't look like it.
Well, I don't, on, no, yeah, sorry. On current projects, but could we go back to your, at the conclusion of the plan, the existing urban renewal plan? Is it your intent to kind of show in that report, or maybe before, the, the growth from perhaps the frozen assessed value back in '88, and then the current assessed value in 2021?
Yes, so there, I hope to do two things. One is update the accomplishments document that talks about the projects. It really illustrates the partnerships and what the projects are, what they achieve. But also to possibly consult with more experienced urban renewal folks that have more number-crunching ability to really, when we are done with that area, so maybe later in 2020 and then also 2021, there are lots of things that we will need to do. Obviously, with urban renewal areas that are 25 years-ish, there are, there are not often times that you're either starting a new area or finishing an area. And so I think it's important that the city and the Urban Renewal Agency take a look at the impact that this urban renewal area has had in terms of numbers and in terms of project costs. How much was that sidewalk with consulting for design engineering and for construction and for permitting? I think those are important things to be looking at. So I don't want to use the word audit, especially on tonight's agenda with a capital A. But I do think that it's important that we look back and, and really are able to communicate how effective, you know, and in what ways. And are there ways that we can do things better in the future when we are talking about urban renewal?
Madam Chair, I, I'm pleased to hear you say that. I'm, I'm wondering out loud, so I apologize, if it would be helpful as we look at other, or as the city looks at other urban renewal areas, is it the information or kind of the education process that this might add, or pieces of it that might add to, as we go into that discussion?
Yes, that, that's a great point. It could be that we can take smaller chunks of that audit with a small A as we are providing you with information about making decisions. I know that the city is considering, again, this kind of sounds strange, but wearing a different hat as your city council hat, as you all make decisions about whether or not to adopt a new urban renewal plan for the Roads End Villages area of town. You know, I think that those data points are helpful for the public, for our overlapping taxing districts and for you all.
Any other questions of Allison?
Do you want me to go, go over anything from 2019, or shall we just have it be noted as it's in your agenda? And if you have questions, I'm happy in the future anytime to go into detail.
Well, you have six minutes.
Okay.
How about if you use five of them?
Give it a try. Okay, great. So there are three of us in the office, and we are located right across from the Planning and Community Development Department. So myself and Pam Wyron is our part-time administrative coordinator, and then Jody Messer is our economic development coordinator. She is with the Rare AmeriCorps program. She's here in the audience. And she's here through July, so we're very lucky to have her working on four specific projects, one of which is this new urban renewals, new urban renewal areas plan. So what has been completed in 2009? We did basically get to a decision on the Cutler Baywalk Sidewalk Gap Section. So that had been a project that had been sitting since about 2016 as we worked through our Southwest Jetty Realignment Project, which was done last year, and then also our Cutler Spooner Point Highway 101 Turnout Project. So we, we really felt as though we needed to focus on those other projects before we dove into this last section of sidewalk. So we did get to a decision per your direction to move forward with the design and permitting, which we feel is a great point of decision, just so that we can move forward with contracting and get going on that project again. With economic development projects, we did make public offering of those properties. That was in 2018. And so we have been working all year on those nine publicly-owned properties and basically preparing those properties for development. We submitted an application for an integrated planning grant through Business Oregon for a survey of underutilized properties. This is to look at properties that are not redeveloping, and we don't know why. It could be that people want to sell the properties, or they want to redevelop, but they don't know how to get started, or there's some barrier that's preventing them to do that. So we want to figure out what, what are those barriers, and then how can we fold that into the Economic Development Toolbox to really help those properties redevelop because there isn't any, oh, there's a low tax base on those properties at this time. So that's one of the projects that Jody is working on. We are exploring formation of new urban renewal areas, so there were two feasibility studies completed for two possible new areas. We also established a city advisory committee for Roads End Villages at Cascadehead Plan Area. We've done a minor amendment to the Year 2000 Development Plan, which basically means that for our existing urban renewal area, we have removed some acreage so we can use it for possibly forming a new urban renewal district. We did do one facade improvement loan for siding, paint, windows, and that was for a lodging facility, so that's a 0% interest loan payable over 10 years for $150,000. We also have one grant that was approved, that was $20,000, for the Oregon Coast Community College Small Business Development Center. So for those of you listening, if you're located in the urban renewal area and you have a business and you yourself want to take some classes through the Small Business Development Center, or you have staff who want to take some classes, could be QuickBooks, it could be really anything that would help improve your business, those are available through the Small Business Development Center on a scholarship basis, and that is paid for through the Urban Renewal Agency. We also have one grant that was previously approved for $28,000 to the Bay Area Merchants Association to help fund their downtown manager position. And so they work on events and basically supporting the nonprofit that is the business association for the south half of Lincoln City. We also did commercial lease renewals and management with BFY Backpack for Kids, Community Services Consortium Career Tech School, Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council, Lincoln City Cultural Center, and the Lincoln City Glass Center. So the city's economic development and urban renewal agency staff do oversee all those commercial leases. So what are we going to be doing for 2020 in 30 seconds or less? We hope to enter into development agreement for three of those nine properties. Remember that four are Urban Renewal Agency-owned. We are trying as fast as we can to move those forward, given that there are market factors and different levels of development readiness that all of those properties are at. We will be coming back to you later this year with a develop, we have to develop a plan for agency-owned property disposition. So what is the full inventory of the properties owned by the agency, and do you want to retain those as you look to sunset or close out your existing urban renewal area? There are some that you may want to give to the city, there are others you may want to sell, and obviously, you have your four redevelopment sites that we're working on. We will complete the Roads End Villages at Cascadehead Urban Renewal Plan for council consideration. We will continue to administer our economic development loan and grant programs while developing the new tools, doing marketing and outreach. We work with city administration and planning on economic development and housing objectives. We understand that councils, one of council's top priorities is workforce housing, and that really means all rungs of the ladder to assist for people at all income levels for our workforce. We are talking about developing an exit strategy for the lease with the Lincoln City Glass Studio. We are working on completing historic window replacement project at Cultural Center, and we will be negotiating commercial leases with Mo's and McKay's Market. We are also assisting with Phase 1 of the city wayfinding to include design for north and south entry monumentation signs. We have been a little while without that. We were waiting for the city to complete branding efforts. We were waiting for the city to complete branding efforts, and now we have those in place, and we're ready to implement and put those into our monumentation signs. And then we also assist Parks and Recreation with the city's EV charging stations and with the possibility of exploring community center solar energy. So those are all things that we hope to get before you in 2020.
I think we need to clone you. Thank you so much, Allison.
Thank you.
As we close, are there any other comments from the agency members? Ooh, a quiet group. Okay, we are adjourned.